Uh, I'd like to call the Wayne County Commission Youth Council meeting to order. I am Wayne County Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick. And we have the clerk of the commission Sherrell Lewis, who I'd like just to give a brief introduction and also explain to the youth members what your role is.
Good evening. My name is Sherrell Lewis. I'm Legislative Research Assistant for the Wayne County Commission in the Office of Policy Research and Analysis.
And what do you do?
I clerk the meetings.
Anything else? I know you didn't expect to do this, but this is a-
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't expect to speak here.
I know. This is a learning experience and I'm trying to make sure that um, they understand, the youth council understand the roles of uh, everyone that is part of what makes the commission work and you're an integral part in that.
Yeah, so I build the agendas for the meetings, the squibs, the um, report packages that go to full board, the minutes for the meeting. I have to take those as well.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your introduction. And the, whomever is the president, you would actually open up the meeting and call it to order, but I'm gonna do that today. Um, and so the meeting is called to order. And uh, Madam Clerk, can we get the roll call, please?
Yes. Each member is acknowledging that they are attending the meeting via Zoom and that they are located in Wayne County, Michigan unless otherwise stated when I call your name. Jaden Ware. Morgan Porter. Gabrielle Langston.
Okay, um, are they unmuted? And I want to make sure that you know that when she calls your name, you just need to say here.
I do see Morgan Porter. He's muted.
Okay, yep. So everyone just uh, unmute yourselves and then mute yourself back once you um, acknowledge that you are here.
Jaden Ware? I'm not sure if he's on the line.
Okay.
Uh, my name was misspelled. It's Jaden Walton.
Jaden Walton?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll write that down. I'm sorry. Gabrielle Langston?
I'm here.
Cordell Clyburn? Sharon Breach? Lakendra Reynolds Smith? Taylan Hodges?
Here.
Ajaya Rahaman?
Here.
Alexa Solei?
Here.
Deara Searls?
Here.
Jayvon Simmons?
Here.
Kirtana Dennis Sacran?
Here.
Kendall Spivey?
Here.
You have a corn present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next item?
The approval of the minutes from the October twenty ninth, twenty twenty meeting.
Can I get a motion for approval? Everyone should have received a copy of the minutes. Um, you should have reviewed the minutes to the meeting to see if there was anything that was missing or that should be included in the agenda. Did everyone get a copy? Yes, no, maybe?
I received the copy.
Yes, I received the copy.
Same.
Okay, so can one of you um, say that you would like for the minutes to be approved? Or move to have the meetings approved? Anybody?
I moved to have them approved.
And you are?
Kendall Spivey.
Thank you. Any, anyone support it?
I think it-
I supported.
I supported.
Is, but, all right, it's been, thank you. It's been moved and supported. Who supported it first?
I think it was Jayvon.
Jayvon, okay. It's been moved by Kendall Spivey and it's been supported by Jayvon. And um, if there's no uh, further discussion, the, the motion passed and the meetings have been approved. Next item, Madam Clerk.
CEO Business. There is none listed. Item D1 under new business is the president report.
And we don't have a president, but we will very soon. Uh, but I do wanna make some comments. Um, and this is in reference to the uh, the suggestion, I believe it was by Ajaya to uh, have a group me, meeting uh, with the group. Uh, after discussing that with our staff attorney, due to the Open Meeting, Meetings Act, we cannot uh, have outside separate meetings as a group. Um, we have to be fully open and um, transparent to the public because this is a quasi-governmental group now. So we have to ensure that everything is out in the open and uh, for the public to participate. So that is um, why we didn't follow up with you on the group me suggestion. That would be all that I have as far as uh, a president's report. Next item?
Item two, elections of WCCYC officers, two-minute speech by candidates for president, vice president, secretary, and preliminary.
All right, so we have uh, two youth members that were interested in, and we'll start with the president's seat. And then I'll let you um, take it over and, and we're going to have the chair uh, of the Wayne County Commission, Alicia Bell. She's going to speak uh, after you have been elected and help you walk you through the meetings and will be uh, you will be able to reach out to her in the future to help you understand the workings of a meeting because she's an expert at it. She does it all day long. Um, and so uh, with that, we have two candidates for uh, president and that is Member Langston. Um, I will have you give your two-minute presentation and, and all of the members should have received um, your bio and why you wanted to be president. And uh, Sherrell, is there any way you can spotlight her when she gives her, her speech?
When um, when someone talks, their uh, picture goes first. So that's the only thing. There's like a green box that goes around it. So that will highlight her, but other than that, no.
Okay, all right, no problem. All right, uh, Ms. Langston, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, let's uh, find you. And you can go right ahead with your presentation um, as to why you think you're the best person for the seat.
Okay. Good evening, Wayne County Commission's Youth Council staff and members. My name is Gabrielle Langston and I'm currently a junior at Cass Technical High School. I am beyond grateful to have the opportunity to be a part of this prestigious organization and run for an office of leadership. This year I'll be running for president and I truly believe my strong leadership capabilities, organizational skills, my trustworthiness, ambition, and ability to work tremendously well with others suits me for this position. Before anything, I would love to give you all a little background about me and who I am. Character is a very important part of who I am. Having character means being honest, courageous, reliable, strong, and responsible. I honestly believe that is who I am and who I was raised to be. Over the years, I've been in many positions in organizations and clubs such as a leader on my class executive board and Doctors of Tomorrow Rising, which is an organization in which many sophomores, juniors, and seniors take monthly trips to U of M Medical School where we get to learn more about medicine as well as building a relationship with our mentor that we are matched with. These programs have helped to further shape me for this leadership position. Ever since I was a young girl, having more women in leadership positions has always been something I wanted to change. Giving this opportunity to run for president will allow me to make a change and a difference I've always wanted to make. With that being said, I would like to tell you all about myself. I'm an African-American young lady who has grown up in the Northville community where I have played soccer for many years and have been a part in the, in many organizations and clubs such as the Health Club, Detroit NAACP, Class of Twenty Twenty Two Executive Board, National Honor Society, AKA Teens, and my volleyball team. My parents are founders of a fifteen-year-old ministry where I'm actively involved in the youth ministry, liturgical dance, children's church teacher, and I also volunteer for the bi-monthly pantry where we give food to those in need. I'm also a business owner and I own a snack shop called Gabby's Sweet Treats. This has taught me to be very responsible and diligent with the many things I have to take care of in my store. One of my favorite activities is traveling with my family. I've been fortunate to have visited many places including Rome, Venice, Amalfi Coast, Florence, Paris, Greece, Malta, Mexico, Turks and Caicos, and numerous other US and Caribbean destinations. I enjoy exploring new places and seeing other cultures and communities. But the one thing I can say I have enjoyed the most in my life is living in a multi-generational household and having the opportunity to hear the perspective of my grandfather who grew up in the city of Detroit in the forties and fifties and to compare it to how my life is now. It has given me insight I never would have otherwise. I feel that my experience, fresh perspective, and strong worth that make me the perfect candidate to be the president of the Wayne County Commissioners Youth Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much uh, for that presentation. And now we will have uh, Member Dana Shakarin. I hope I didn't mess that up too much.
You were close.
You can go right ahead and tell us uh, why you'd like to be president.
Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Kirtana Dennis Sacran and I'm currently a junior at Northville High School. I'm extremely excited to announce that I'll be running for the presidential position this year and would love to share my ideas on how to further improve this prodigious council. However, first, I'd like to give everyone a proper introduction about myself. I'm a very hardworking and compassionate person. I fight for what I believe in and don't give up quite easily. I'm highly interested in the STEM field and advocate for many young women to pursue STEM-related careers. From a young age, I used to be quite shy, though. I did not have many friends and I was always hesitant when trying to develop the courage to talk to people, particularly to adults. To combat this, I joined many different clubs in an attempt to better my socialization skills. And luckily, most of my social anxiety has disappeared and I'm able to talk to all of you today. But dealing with the struggle has really helped me realize how many kids across the country probably deal with the same experience. And that's why if I'm elected as president, I'd like to implement monthly leadership seminars where kids from Wayne County can attend Zoom sessions where they learn techniques that will help improve their confidence when speaking to other people, as well as help them step out of their comfort zone, especially since many kids don't have the opportunity to communicate with other people as much as they did before. I also feel that a leader should be someone who has experience and delegation and can communicate with other board members efficiently. From being the president of my school's biomedical engineering club, the president of my school's guidance club, a committee member of the Mirco's Internal Relations Department, and being a mentor for my local middle school science Olympiad program, I believe that I have ample experience in being able to lead a council to success. Additionally, two crucial qualities that I think all leaders should possess is humility and open-mindedness. A leader needs to incorporate everyone's ideas and make sure every council member is in unanimous agreement with the activity or idea being discussed. I possess both the experience and abilities to make sure that the Wayne County Commission Youth Council can take its next steps to further improve itself and I would be deeply honored to be voted as president of this prestigious council. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. So, we will um, vote um, for each member. You can also vote for yourself. We would like to start with Ms. Langston. If all of you can go and raise your hand uh, for-
Before you vote, let me-
Oh, go right ahead.
I just want to uh, congratulate both young ladies for excellent presentations and putting themselves out there to be president. You both did an absolutely wonderful job on um, speaking and talking about yourself and running for the position. So uh, one of you will become president, but you're both winners in my eyes. So again, thank you for putting yourself out there.
Thank you for that. And that is so true, just um, stepping up to a leadership position, you're, you're a winner for that. So, all right, um, and by the way, do we have any other commissioners on the line today? I-
I didn't see any.
Okay, just so that we um, don't wanna acknowledge the other commissioners on the line. Okay, um, so let's uh, start with Ms. Langston and we can just do uh, hand raised for all those. You can only vote for one or the other, not, not both. And it's, it's up to you guys uh, who you would like um, to have as your president. So you could go ahead and vote. And does everyone know how to? Uh-huh.
So I apologize for interrupting. So this is Felicia Johnson. I am the attorney for the Wayne County Commission. Um, so as Commissioner McCormick indicated, um, this is a quasi-governmental body, which means you are required to comply with the laws of the state. And one of those laws includes the Open Meetings Act. So for purposes of Open Meetings Act, we need to ensure um, that the public who are entitled to attend every meeting because you're a quasi-governmental body, that all votes are clear to the public who may be listening in or, and/or viewing or Zoom. So I say that to say that um, if we can maybe do a voice vote or you can confirm the vote verbally when they do the hand raise, that way if someone happens to be on the line, um, they can also be fully aware of how each member is voting because that is what's required under the statute.
Okay, that's fine. So we will just do a, a voice vote then. So for um, each member, um, and I'm not sure how to best to the voice roll call. You know what, Sherrell, can you just?
Yeah.
Um, do the roll call and, and then they can just say who they want to vote for. And then um, then that should, should uh, satisfy that requirement.
Okay.
Okay.
Jaden?
I vote for Ms. Langston.
Morgan?
Um, I'll vote for um, the other candidate. I just can't pronounce her name right.
Kirtana?
Kirtana, okay.
Gabrielle?
Ms. Langston?
Cordell?
Ms. Langston.
Sharon?
Uh, she's not here. And uh, she's not here either.
Taylan?
Ms. Langston?
Ajaya?
I would like to vote for Kirtana.
Alexa?
I would like to vote for Ms. Langston.
Deara?
I would like to vote for Ms. Langston.
Jayvon?
I'm voting for Ms. Langston.
Kirtana?
Uh, I'd like to vote for Ms. Dennis Sacran.
Kendall?
I'd like to vote for Kirtana.
Would you like me to tally up the votes, Commissioner?
Yes, please.
Okay, give me one second.
I came up with Ms. Langston, Sherrell.
Yeah, I did, but I wasn't sure if they wanted like a number or anything.
Yes, that's what uh-
Yeah, it's seven.
Okay.
All right. Well, congratulations to both of you for running um, and congratulations, Ms. Langston. Uh, as the president, uh, you will uh, preside over all of the, the meetings. And I will let um, the Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Chair Bell um, take it from here and you guys can work together uh, to run the rest of the meeting with the exception of some things that I wanted to make sure that we uh, address. But um, Commissioner Bell and President Langston. Madam Langston, yep. So if you take a look at the agenda, um, you can basically follow uh, what we have on the agenda. And um, the next item would be the presentation by uh, Commissioner Bell.
Are we doing the elections for Vice President, Secretary, and Preliminary?
Yes, we are. I'm so sorry. I'm jumping the- Um, I am so sorry, yes. Um, and in fact, um, we only had uh, one person for each of the other seats. That's why I kinda skipped over. Um, but we will go ahead and have you guys just do your two-minute speech. Uh, Ms. Ajana, Member Ajana? For Vice President.
My name is Ajaya.
Ajaya, I'm sorry.
Okay. Hello, fellow youth members and council advisors. My name is Azera Haman. I'm in twelfth grade and I attend Renaissance High School. I am running, and I am running for the vice president's seat in this council. I want to run for this position because I believe that my ideas and leadership skills will be best suited for this position and I want to make the twenty twenty to twenty-one year a great year for all of us. I have dedicated a lot of time doing community service work as a member of the Delta Gyms of Detroit Organization, but I also like to do a lot of community service work on my own because I believe that it is imperative that we help the people in our community. For example, myself and a few close friends made over one hundred fifty care packages for homeless adults and children that included masks for the pand- for the pandemic, gloves, socks, and candy over this Halloween. My time as a Delta Gents over, on the other hand, is mostly spent withholding events to provide enjoyment, resources, and even education to the people in the Detroit area. Last year, we held an event for Kwanzaa in order to inform people about the history of the holiday and as well as their African heritage. We are constantly holding events to provide free wor- free resources throughout our community as well. And I want to be able to bring what I have learned from my years being involved with these community services here so we can make a change for the youth together. The vice president overlooks the social media and com- and communications committee and I believe that the social media is the best way to share our plans and show the project, show the progress of our future project, projects. I have specific ideas that are mainly within the social media department and I would love to implement them into our plans for this year. Considering that we are in a time of the coronavirus pandemic, social media and technology is what is keeping us informed and together during these times. Because of this, I believe that it is extremely imperative for us to show what we want to do for the youth through social media so they can see the positive things happening and so they, and so they can also feel like they are part of a process as well. Social media will also allow us to see it as the opinions of the youth in our community and it is our important, and it is important that we listen to our fellow young people in order to make the proper improvements within our community. As a vice president, I will ensure that we will be using the media and technol- technology in the most proactive and effective ways possible. And finally, a leader listens to the people around them, but a good leader makes sure that those voices are being heard. I want to make sure everyone is able to have input into whatever decisions we make because everyone's opinions and ideas should be heard. In order for this year to be great, we must listen to each other and work as a team. And if I'm elected vice president, this will be my number one goal and duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ajaya. And as I mentioned earlier, the, there was only one person and that was you that ran for the vice presidency. So by default, um, congratulations. And thank you so much for stepping up. And our next member, and I also want to say to you guys, um, all of you, from what I see, have um, dressed uh, very well today for, for our meeting. So I want to thank you for that as well. Um, the next person we'll have is Member Simmons for Secretary.
Well, actually, I don't know if you got it, but I actually rescinded my interest in secretary because I wanted to do the Communications Committee uh, full thread.
Okay, so you don't, okay. Is anyone interested in the secretary's position?
I am.
And who's that?
Uh, Kirtana.
Okay, Kirtana. And uh, would you just like to say anything in reference to that? And to that position? And if not, it's okay, because you just gave a full presentation.
Um, I can mention like a couple of things.
Sure.
I have a lot of experience in being a secretary. Um, in my old council from the Wayne County Parks Youth and Recs Council, I was actually the secretary there and I managed a lot of the budget and I would write what we discussed in every meeting. And um, I'm also like the manager kind of for one of my school clubs. It's called the Science and Research and Innovation Club. And we basically promote STEM to kind of like women who are not represented in the STEM field as they should be.
Okay, well, great, great. Well, you have the experience and uh, since there is no one else, Kirtana, um, congratulations. You are now the secretary. Thank you so much for stepping up again.
Thank you.
Um, so for the members of secretary and vice president, we still need to have a vote on uh, your nominations. So for the vice president, can I just do a roll call, Madam Clerk, right quick for, for vice president? And that was Ajaya.
Jalen? Jaden, I'm sorry, Jaden.
I vote for Ajaya.
Morgan?
Ajaya.
Gabrielle?
Ajaya.
Cordell?
Ajaya.
Taylan?
Ajaya.
Ajaya?
Ajaya.
Alexa?
Ajaya.
Deara?
Ajaya.
Jayvon?
Ajaya.
Kirtana?
Ajaya.
Kendall? Is, is Kendall still on?
Can you hear?
I can hear you now.
Can you? Okay, I said Ajaya.
Okay, well- Okay, well, Ajaya, congratulations again. And then for Secretary, can we get a roll call for Athana? Katana?
Jaden?
You could just say yes or no.
Jaden?
I said yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Gabrielle?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Taylan?
Yes.
Ajaya?
Yes.
Alexa? Alexa? I think Alexa is muted. Alexa?
Okay, we can. She said it's not letting her unmute, so I'm not sure why, but we can move on to the next person.
Deara?
Good evening. My name is Deara Thurls and I'm 15 years old and I'm a sophomore at Cass Technical High School.
Deara, we were just voting. You'll be up in just a second.
I'm sorry, but yes, I vote for Ajaya.
Thank you.
Javon?
Yes.
Katana?
Yes.
Kendall?
Yes.
Alexa, were you able to unmute?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, thank you and congratulations again to our new members. And now we'll go on to Daria for Parliamentary. There were only, she was the only one that ran for it. So can you go right ahead with your speech?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Deara Thurls. I'm 15 years old. I'm a sophomore at Cass Technical High School. And my hobbies, I like to sketch in my free time or paint. Persistent, focused, and service-oriented are characteristics I strive to demonstrate each day. There are some days where I am more successful than others in fulfilling that goal, but daily making the effort to be the absolute best I can be is incredibly important to me. Additionally, always being ready to learn, new things, and exhibit leadership are equally important. This is why I humbly submit my nomination, non, I'm sorry, nomination for the position of the Parliamentary for the inaugural Wayne County Youth Council. Why did you consider me for Parliamentary? Despite living in the peculiar reality of quarantine for the last eight months and only being in the 10th grade, I've been able to demonstrate leadership in various ways. I'm a Girl Scout and have been scouted for 10 years. As a Girl Scout Senior, I've facilitated passion badge workshops for younger girls as well as volunteer for local and district-wide events. As one can imagine, managing a group of young girls requires patience and organization. Otherwise, issues can develop very quickly. Additionally, I'm a teacher assistant with the Math Corps Program sponsored by Wayne State University. In this role, I was responsible for mentoring sixth grade students in the program, ensuring that they attended class on time, completed assignments, and assisted them with understanding concepts during the daily sessions each week. Again, such a position requires patience and organization. Lastly, I'm familiar with parliamentary procedure as my mother is a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians. Therefore, I already have a copy of Robert's Rule of Order Newly Revised in Brief as well as the 12th Edition of Robert's Rule of Order. I'm always in search of new learning experiences and helping others where I can, and this office position will assist me in doing that further. I know that I'll be able to perform the duties of the position consistently and effectively.
Well, thank you so much for your speech and we will now have the vote. Madam Chair, excuse me, Madam Clerk.
Jaden?
Yeah.
Morgan?
Yes.
Gabrielle?
Yes.
Cordell?
Yes.
Taylan?
Yes.
Ajaya?
Yes.
Alexa?
Yes.
Deara?
Yes.
Javon?
Yes.
Katana?
Yes.
Kendall?
Yes.
Congratulations, Deara, and all of the other newly elected members to the first Wayne County Commission Youth Council. We again, thank you so much for your participation and your leadership. And now I think I can let the newly elected President take over and introduce our guest speaker and also the Chair of the Wayne County Commission. She will also help guide you through the rest of the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce our guest speaker for tonight. Chair, Chair Ms. Bell on how to conduct a formal meeting.
All right, good evening, everyone again. Well, you know how to conduct a meeting because I'm sure you were very observant of Commissioner Baker McCormick on this evening and how she went through all of the items and how the clerk called out the items that were next. A random meeting, for those of you who've never run a meeting before, is pretty much the role is to make sure that the agenda goes as presented and that you move the medium along with the items that you have on the agenda. Is making sure that you are keeping your group on point and on task. And just making sure in that same vein that everyone who has an opportunity, who wants to speak, has an opportunity to speak to get their point of view across. But you are in charge of the meeting as the Chair. So if you are to the point where you want to move on, you simply say, Madam Clerk, next item. And it goes and it moves on to the next item. Let me know, those of you who are familiar with Robert's Rules of Order. Anyone raise your hand on the screen like this if you've ever heard of Robert's Rules of Order? And I'm going to scroll down so I can see who's raising their hand. And it looks like no one. Okay.
Morgan and Kendall.
Oh, they were in the chat. Okay, cool. So Robert's Rules of Order is basically a rulebook on how to run a meeting. It's a universally accepted procedures on how meetings are conducted. I would suggest that each of you go on your cell phone and Google Robert's Rules of Order, How to Conduct a Meeting. That will help you know when you should speak, how you should speak, when to make a motion, how to support a motion, when this discussion. For example, if I were to, let me see, go down and say, Madam Clerk, next item after item number three is what? And the clerk would say, WCCYC Social Media Communications Committee Formation Led by the Vice President. And then I would call upon the Vice President and say, Vice President, could you please discuss that item? And then she would discuss that item. If there were items that needed to be voted on, the President or the Chair of the meeting would then say, at this time, I would like a motion for that item. Someone would say, I've moved to approve X, Y, and Z. Then someone would say, support or second. And then there's room for discussion. After you move the item, second the item, you have discussion, then you call for a vote on that item. And of course, it's either to approve, to not approve, or to abstain. And to abstain simply means that you don't want to approve it or disapprove it. You're just going to kind of stay out of it. I would suggest that you always have a position. If you're going to approve something, say yes. If you don't agree with it, just say no. But abstention is on the fence. So I think of all of my years in public office, I might have abstained once out of the hundreds and hundreds of votes that I've taken. And I say to myself, just pick a side, either go before or be against it, whatever the issue is, just pick one and move forward. But to abstain is kind of taking the easy way out, saying, I don't want to touch that one. And sometimes that's what you should do, but you shouldn't make it a habit. You should always vote yes or no on whatever the item is. So I would ask that you all to be as familiar as you can with Robert's Rules of Order. You don't have to buy the book. However, I will say, Parliamentary Thurls, because you are the Parliamentary and the Parliamentary is the one where the Chair would go to if they have questions about a procedure. That you should study that because you would be the one that the Chair relies on to go back how a motion was formed. You know, if you have to go back and reconsider a motion or reconsider an item, how you do that. So I would suggest that you, Deara Thurls, go through and be very familiar with Robert's Rules of Order. As a matter of fact, I think all the officers, the Vice President, President, Secretary, all of you should be very familiar with that because this will help you after you're out of high school and you go into college and into your professional life with how to conduct a meeting. You'll be surprised how many adults do not know how to properly conduct a meeting. So you will be heads and tails over everyone else. If you could go in and you can, you have you call for a vote, you call for a motion, you second a motion to second that motion and you have this discussion. Always important that you have discussion after the motion and then you take the vote. That's the primary way of how you do a motion. The Chair, make sure that you go through each item and move the meeting along. That's very important. I'm sure those of you who are maybe in the 11th, 12th grade, you've had an opportunity to run meetings or at least to attend meetings where you've seen that in action. So that's all that I have right now. I will ask you this, though. We have our formal commission meetings on the first and third Thursday of every month at 10:00 a.m. With this Zoom environment that we're in right now, it's easy to attend those meetings. So if any of you are available at 10:00 a.m. on the first and third Thursday, I would invite you to attend our full board meeting so that you can see exactly how we operate as a Board of Commissioners when it comes to conducting our meetings. We have committee meetings outside of our full board meetings and they're conducted similarly. So if you're available the first and third Thursday at 10:00 a.m., please zoom in and just observe how we conduct our business as your Wayne County Commissioner, the body that is in charge of Wayne County Government. That's all that I have. Are there any questions anyone may have? Any questions at all? I'm sure you all will be just fine. I'm going through to see if there are any questions. Nope. Don't see any. So it's not hard. Once you get the hang of it, you'll it'll be like second nature going through and running your meeting. So seeing no questions, I will turn it back over to the President. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair Bell. Next, we'll move on to D4, WCCYC Social Media and Communications Committee Formation Led by the Vice President.
Member Ajaya, are you here? She said she had.
I am looking for the.
So, so we didn't choose any members that said that they were interested. The last time we left it open, Member Simmons said that he was interested. I don't know if there's anyone else, so that's kind of where we are on the Social Media Communications Committee.
Okay.
Okay, so Madam President, you can see who is interested in in being on that committee and then the Vice Chair would be the oversight and helping to run the committee and make sure that everything they need is in order.
Okay, so is anyone interested in the Social Media Committee?
I am.
I am.
Can we raise our hands?
Okay, great. So we have two members that are interested in the Social Media and Communications Committee meeting. And so we would need for the Vice President to get with the two members. And you'll also reach out to my staff to provide you with the social media information and how to go about any postings and any press release and anything that you do. It has to be approved by my office. And sometimes it'll have to be approved by the corporate counsel to ensure that it doesn't violate any of our county rules. Madam President, you can go right ahead from here.
Okay, next we have E, which is Announcements. We have three announcements. One, which is the To Please Submit the WCCYC Logo Contest, which is due December 12. Next, we have December 17, the meeting Discuss the Youth Initiative Topic. And lastly, we have the next meeting, which is December 17 at 6:00 p.m. And make sure you arrive by 5:00, 5:50 p.m.
And just to expound on it, Madam President, you will we'll talk more offline. So the next agenda you're going to actually help to put together. But we wanted suggestions for the Wayne County Commission Youth Council logo. So we wanted members to create a logo of some kind and you can submit it. And again, the best logo will be voted on and it will be used for all of our communication items. And so we wanted to have those logos submitted by December 12. And I'm hoping that we at least get about at least five different types of logos so that we can submit them to you guys and then you will choose which one is best. And at the December 17 meeting, we will start the discussion about a youth topic. So we want you all to start thinking about that for the next meeting. What's important to you? What's important to your peers? And, you know, come up with those topics and then you guys can pick and choose which topic you want to emphasize or to focus on. What I would like to do, and again, this is up to the President, is to have a member of the staff to help, to come in and help you guys to look at how to analyze the pros and cons of a legislative issue. Because if you have a problem, you want to figure out how Because if you have a problem, you wanna figure out how, how can we solve it? How can we go to our legislators or our commissioners and ask them to resolve this problem in our community? And there is some analysis that takes place in order to ensure that, that the messaging in that resolution or that legislation is correct. So that is going to be at our next meeting. So come up with some ideas about the logo as well as the youth initiative. Our next meeting is on the 17th at 6:00 p.m. And the Secretary, I'd like you to also reach out to my office, Tama Smith, who is taking minutes today. And for, for the Secretary, but you will have to take minutes after, and she wants to show you how to set up the minutes for each meeting. And so just reach out to my office with that, for that information. And I think that was all of the announcements that I had. Are there any questions?
I have one thing, and I guess a couple of things. One, you walk and decide how formal you want to be. For example, when we have our commission meetings, we address each other as Commissioner Baker McCormick, Commissioner Bell or Chair Bell. I don't know if you all wanna be that formal and put, but if you do, decide if you wanna be called Councilmember Smith or Councilman Hodges or Commissioner Rahim or how you want to be addressed during your meetings. It can just be your first name, but you are, maybe you should decide how formal or informal you want to be. And then I think it'd be helpful, when you have your next meeting, to also talk about if you want to have any particular guest speakers, who those would be, if you want to hear someone talk about a particular career or a policy issue, a state rep, a state senator, or someone, you know, just kind of discuss moving forward, who you would want to hear from, if you wanna hear from anyone. You may want this talk amongst yourselves and discuss policy amongst yourselves and issues that are important to you. So at your next meeting, maybe you can have a discussion period where you just kind of throw out ideas on how you want, what you want to hear from and what policy you may be interested in implementing or forwarding to the Wayne County Commission. And I also have, I'm sorry, one of your members. I wasn't looking at my phone, but she texted me at like 6:04, LaKendra Reynolds-Smith. She wasn't able to get in, she didn't have the entrance information. And I just texted to, I don't know if she made it in, I just sent it. But I just wanted you to know that she didn't get the information to get into the meeting.
Okay. Not sure what happened there, but everyone should have been sent the link. But we'll make sure she gets the information next time. And again, to the President, we'll also follow up with you as well just to help you with the next meeting, meeting minutes. Not the minutes, but the agenda for the next meeting. And so if you have any questions, feel free to call my office. And Tama Smith, you all have my phone number. Feel free to reach out to me, which again is 313-224-0884. And if there's any announcements or any discussion that you guys want to have right now before we adjourn the meeting, Madam President, you, you know, you can feel free to, to manage that and run, and run the meeting or discussion.
This is Sherrell, I had a question. Could you send me over LaKendra's email? I don't believe she was on the list.
May I speak? This is Tama.
Yes.
I just, I just pulled up the email, and her email is included in the email that Ms. Sherrell Lewis sent out. To, the fave dark-skinned, I mean, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to give out her email address, but her email address is on there.
Okay. Okay, okay, I do see it now, I wasn't sure who that was. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was, again, Tama Smith. She's in my office, the youth coordinator. You guys can reach out to her for any questions, any issues that you might have. Okay. So, Madam President.
Yes.
Yep, you can go right ahead, and whenever the meeting, you know, if you have any other announcements or you want to have, any of the members have any announcements, it's up to you how you want to end the meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. So does any other members have any questions or concerns or anyone wants to make any remarks?
And this is mainly for the President. This is Felicia Johnson, I don't know if you all can see me. I, again, am the attorney for the Wayne County Commission. So are you in this meeting? I'm gonna need you to announce for public comments. I don't know if we have any public on the phone right now, but as I indicated before, this is a quasi-governmental body, and so you all are required to comply with certain laws, including the Open Meetings Act, which means that all of your meetings are open to the public. So as you're conducting your meetings, just be mindful that any member of the public is allowed to participate and listen into the meetings, and by law, you're required to take any comments from that public if indeed a member of the public has a comment. So while it's not on your agenda, I'm gonna need you to add as item, your new item F, "Public Comments For Me," and then you'll announce public comments. The clerk will then open, unmute everyone, and we'll see if anyone has public comments. If they don't, then you can move on to your next item. But before you actually adjourn, if you can do that, that will keep us in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. And when you do your next agenda, it'll just be an agenda item that's there for everyone to see that, you know, so you'll know in the future. So again, I'm Felicia, I'm the attorney for the Commission. If you guys have any questions, feel free to ask. I'm gonna thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
I love it, or just yours?
The single was cooking.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
So can you mute, I think, is that Sherrell? I'm not sure who's, thank you.
Okay, so does anyone from the public have any comments or concerns that they would like to make?
So now, in order to do that, we would have to unmute everybody. So Sherrell, you wanna unmute everyone for a minute? And then mute them back if there's no one that has any public comments.
Everyone is unmuted.
Okay. So you can ask the question again, Madam President.
Does anyone from the public have any concerns or comments that they would like to date, that they would like to make today from the meeting?
Hi, I would like to make a comment. I just wanna say that you guys today just made me so proud. I am so thrilled to be on here and listening to you and seeing what's going on and supporting this initiative. So you're just getting started, but keep up the good job and stay positive. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
And we need your name for the record, please.
My name is Sheila Dudley.
Thank you.
Madam President, you can ask one more time.
Would anyone from the public like to make any comments or concerns from today of the meeting? Now, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
If any members have, did any members have any comments, questions before adjournment? All right.
Did you get a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, can you ask for a motion to adjourn?
Yes. I would like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
My motion.
Thank you.
Who was that that moved it first?
Taylan.
Okay. And so you have, it was moved and it was supported, and you can adjourn, Madam Chair, if you like. Madam President, rather.
I'm sorry, I have one question. So when we adjourn the meeting, do we say the time that we're ending it?
The Secretary or, and/or the clerk would note the time that the meeting starts and ends.
Okay, thank you.
So I would ask that the Secretary record that.
But you don't have to say it.
Okay. And then after, you don't have to say it, they'll just do it. And after you get your motion to adjourn and it's supported, you can say, "Meeting adjourned."
Okay, being adjourned.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you all, we'll get better at this, okay? We'll all get better, and congratulations to all the members.
Congratulations, everyone. And again, if you're able to tune in on December 3rd at 10 o'clock, we'll ask Commissioner Baker McCormick and maybe send out the link to our full board meeting just so you can take a look. You don't have to say for the whole meeting. Maybe just the first 15, 20 minutes, just to get a look on how we conduct our business in our meetings, okay? Congratulations to everyone, congratulations to the new officers. Everyone have a very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.